Fifteen trustees, which as I'm sure you know are appointed by the mayor and approved by you the city council. There are three-year terms of the maximum of two terms, except for the two hospital system presidents and the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Director who serve in perpetuity. You probably recognize a lot of the names here on our current board. These folks bring a wealth of community experience and leadership experience to our task. There are two former city council members, two former state senators, the former director of city finance, presidents of both hospital systems, Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department Director, and citizens from local businesses and organizations, including one dentist and physician. The next slide shows a schematic representation of the financial history of the community health endowment. As you know, the health endowment was created from the funds generated by the sale of Lincoln General Hospital. And our goal is to use the proceeds from that endowment to make Lincoln the healthiest community in the nation. We started with the principal originally of thirty-seven million dollars in nineteen ninety-eight. And as you can see on this schematic, there is an inflation adjustment over that eighteen years of nineteen point three million dollars. And then we add kind of a buffer here that allows for some market fluctuation and for the current inflation level. And that's currently about four point five million dollar buffer. And if you add that up, the principal, the inflation adjustment, and that buffer comes out to about sixty-one million dollars. In addition to that, which is to maintain the endowment, we also have been able to give over those eighteen years a total of twenty-six point five million dollars in grants to health-related projects in Lincoln. Some of these grants are one-year grants, could be for amounts as small as ten thousand dollars or even less, and other grants that are multi-year, meaning up to three years, grants in excess of six hundred thousand dollars in total. So with that background, if you don't have any questions about that, I'll refer to Lori.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to share with you a little bit of our philosophy because I think that it helps people understand a little bit better the grants we make, why we make them, and the philosophy we use when we address issues in our community. A good example of that is what we call transformational philanthropy. And kind of opposed to transactional philanthropy where a foundation, for example, would give a grant, a one-year grant, and it's a transaction, and it addresses a specific project, and then perhaps the next year they move on. What we really try to do is look at how grants can be layered on top of each other, how they can really create a better system for a lot of individuals and not just address one specific problem. So what we like to say is it's about the soil, it's about creating the soil and not just the fruit. That does mean that we, a lot of times, we have to be engaged. Some projects we've been engaged in for more than ten years in order to make that difference. But I think that's absolutely necessary in order to really accomplish big things. So it also means we have to make the number of people we bring to the table as large as possible. We also use a philosophy that money doesn't solve the problem. Money is certainly helpful, but it doesn't always just solve the problem. It takes a lot of partnerships, it takes a lot of innovation, it takes a lot of compromise and collaboration as well. So money is not the key to addressing a lot of these issues. For many of these issues, the learning curve is steep. We have to work very hard at understanding problems. Some of them we may know something about, some of them we know nothing about when we start. So we have to be willing to learn, and the board does a great job of that. We sometimes like to believe that we're the first resort instead of the last. We don't always say we'll cap something off. We may be the first investment in order to get something rolling. That's part of transformational philanthropy as well. And we also think that you don't need a crisis in order to organize. Sometimes you see a crisis looming, or sometimes you project what may be something that's going to impact our community, enact now, as opposed to having to organize later in the midst of all of that chaos. So that's the philosophy that we use. And I wanted to give you just a couple of examples of how that's worked in our community. One of our longest-standing programs is called the Medication Assistance Program. It was one of the very first grants we funded, primarily to provide medications to people in our community that could not afford them. It would have been easy to do that and then to leave that program there, to fund it for three years, and then move on to something else. But we have been funding that now for over ten years. And during that time, we've also been able to wrap around programs like primary care and specialty care and interpretation and urgent care. So we continue to layer other emerging and urgent issues on top of that one, so we're creating a system of care. We're transforming the system as opposed to just addressing one problem. Another example would be-
Lori, what does interpretation mean?
Interpretation, medical interpretation or translation. People who don't speak English.
Oh, of course.
And so, a great example is physicians are required to provide that to individuals, Medicaid clients. And often physicians will just stop accepting Medicaid clients because they don't want to pay for interpretation services. And so what we were able to do is provide a pool of funds for physicians who accept patients at Medicaid rates to be able to take those patients in order to alleviate that cost.
Thank you.
In integrated care, you obviously probably know about the Health 360 Clinic over on O Street, Twenty-third and O, and we're very proud of that project. But I think what we're even more proud of is the fact that we have not just stopped at that idea. There is now legal aid there, there's a mobiles farmer's market there, the Health Department has case management services there, and of course now there's a Head Start. So when you look at that facility, we hope that you don't just see a medical clinic. We hope that what you're seeing is health beyond healthcare and beginning to provide services and wraparound for lots of needy families in our community. We think it's a model for the nation, and we're very proud of that. One last example is peer services, or people who have lived experience with mental illness, being able to use those, that lived experience to help other people. We really began funding the peers at the Mental Health Association about six years ago, and then we moved forward to helping fund the Kiya House, which is a place where folks can drop and stay for a few days who are experiencing mental illness without having to go to the crisis center or into the hospital. And the people they see at the Kiya House are peers. Then there are peers, as you probably know, in the police department. We have funded them in the emergency departments, and now they're funded in the Lincoln Public Schools. So again, it's not simply funding one project at one agency and stopping there and moving on. It's continuing a model that works across various places. So when we look at these things and we set them side to side, what we see are we're changing systems, we're transforming systems. And not only are these separate, but we believe these various programs are also linked together. And in fact, anytime we get a project or fund a project, we look for how to connect it within these systems that we've created. So if you look at it like this animation, we're always in the process of connecting these projects to other projects so that we're really changing the soil and we're not just having that one individual project succeed. So that's a little bit about our philosophy. So how do we know what to fund in all of the needs that are identified in the community? One thing we have done that you may be aware of, and there's the booklet in your packet that looks like this, is we conducted a mapping project where we were able to go and use data that was already existing, much of it city data from the Health Department and other sources, and be able to look at geographically where are problems existing? How can we target our resources so that we're moving to the area of our community that's most in need of that? A good example is child obesity. We have worked very hard in this community, many people have, to lower childhood obesity rates. And in fact, we reached a goal of no more than fifteen percent of children would be considered obese six years ahead of the goal of year 2020. So we had reason to rejoice about that and feel very good about that. The problem is that that's not true for every part of our community. In some parts of our community, the childhood obesity rate is still double our goal. And so what this allows us to do is say, where can we target our resources so that they're being used in the areas of our community that are most in need of attention? So this document has become a document that is used by a lot of people in our community. It guides not only our funding priorities. I have given this presentation on this sixty times in the last eighteen months to individuals who are interested in knowing how our community, where we live, impacts our health. And it certainly does, and we're learning a lot about that and how we can use our funds to tackle those issues. We intend to update this this year, and so there will be a new one of these come out in the middle of 2017. These maps are also available online. Anyone can go to our website, and you can look at any specific census tract in our community. You can layer issues of poverty and obesity and crime on top of each other. And the great thing about this tool is it allows you to see areas of our community that are maybe entering into a time of distress before perhaps it's even visually you're able to see that by driving around our community. There are parts of our community that are high in many areas of concern that perhaps would allow for you and for others to use these maps as a planning tool for the future.
Okay, well, a good example of transformational philanthropy is the focus that the Board of Trustees has put on funding investments in early childhood that have the greatest potential to reduce health disparities over lifespan of these children. And a special focus on childhood toxic stress, childhood obesity, and improve maternal health, healthy birth and early childhood outcomes. There are a number of recent studies, and some of these are included in the packets that were given to you, that have shown that toxic stress in early childhood, and we're talking about from birth to age five, so these are preschool children. Toxic stress in those early years of life can result in some serious physical and behavioral health consequences downstream. An examples of toxic stress would include physical abuse, verbal abuse, drug and alcohol abuse in the home, divorce, family breakup, homelessness, and others. And the physical health consequences that result from this toxic stress included a doubling or more of the rate of heart disease, diabetes, stroke, and obesity as these children move into adulthood. And that, of course, impacts them and their families, but also has a major financial impact on our, on the healthcare costs in our community and our state and nation. In addition to those physical health consequences, there's also behavioral health consequences from this childhood stress. That includes a higher rate of learning disorders, drug and alcohol abuse, and crime as these children move into adulthood. And then that in turn, of course, adds costs to our schools, police, courts, and corrections. So this is something that really needs to be addressed, and that's what we're trying to focus on. In 2016, the Community Health Endowment gave seven grants related to this issue, to early childhood. We provided a grant for the Head Start classrooms at the Health 360 Facility at Twenty-third and O. We provided funds for early classroom center, I'm sorry, early childhood center classrooms at the Willard Community Center, funds for the Healthy Families America Home Visitation for at-risk children, and funds for health navigation for women and children experiencing domestic violence and toxic stress. Another grant for Health and Fitness Center in Central Lincoln, a grant for mobile farmer's market to provide assistance to WIC recipients to purchase healthy foods at the Health 360. And another grant to Prosper Lincoln regarding early childhood oversight. So in 2016 alone, the Health Endowment provided over one point one million dollars on projects directed at early childhood that we hope will have major downstream benefits.
A few other things we wanted to share with you about community outreach. You know, we have an annual meeting each year, some of you attend, and we're always grateful for that. This year, we had the chance of highlighting some fighters, dreamers, and doers in our community. And it was an exciting day. It was one in which people had a chance to tell stories of really overcoming some really significant obstacles or being at the, or leading efforts in order for other folks to be able to do that. So you're always welcome to come to our annual meeting. It's really a time of celebration and a chance to acknowledge the work of other folks. This year, we had an opportunity to recognize the Lincoln Police Department for their work with the peers that I mentioned. We also recognized Matt Talbot Kitchen for their work on trying to end homelessness, and the Malone Community Center for their work on really engaging individuals in healthier behaviors. So a chance to not only tell stories, but to recognize really great work going on in our community. We also, as were required to by Sydney ordinance, released our annual report, and you have a copy of that in your packet as well. One of the things that we've done the last couple of years has been, had a community conversation series. It's an event we hold at our office. It's a fairly intimate event, fifty to seventy folks come to each one of these. But we talk about topics, and I know some of you who have attended, that are really timely to our community, and it's a chance for people to engage in a much more intimate setting with experts, not only maybe experts on the side of providing services, but experts who have lived through certain circumstances such as brain trauma or mental illness. Or the most recent ones were prescription drug abuse and what the changing healthcare landscape is going to look like in our community. These are really popular events, and fortunately TEN Health TV also tapes them, and they are watched thousands of times after they're shown. So I would also encourage you to attend those if you really want to get a taste of some of the issues in our community. Here's a few pictures attached there of recent events, including the last one, which featured representatives from both hospitals, as well as a physician in Judy Halsted, talking about the healthcare landscape. We do use our room, our community room in our office, to encourage people to come and take a beautiful view of our city, be inspired by that. And you'll see the kinds of individuals during the course of the last year who have come and used that space. And we really enjoy the chance to interact with all kinds of organizations and give them an opportunity to brainstorm and retreat a little bit to our space. We also have fitness classes, yoga classes, Tai Chi class down in the Jane Schneider Trail Center below us. And it's been a great opportunity to engage with the community, the neighborhood there, and to bring folks into that space, really for the purpose that I think Jane had hoped it would be, a community gathering place and a place for people to get healthy and think healthy. We really try to give support to our partners that we fund and give them an opportunity to share their news with the public. So we spend a good amount of time making sure that the good work that they're doing receives good visibility. And we also have a very active Board of Trustees who go out and do site visits, and I know Chuck will talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, part of the responsibility of being a member of our board, and by the way, one of the treats, I think, of being on our board is to do the trustee site visits, where we go out and meet with the organizations that are grant recipients. And we do that because we want to establish a good working relationship with these folks. But we also want to find out how our dollars are being spent and whether they're getting the results that were anticipated when the project was approved. And the slide that you, is up on the screen here.
Either, yeah, go ahead.
Well, the one in the upper, the one in the upper right is a picture from a site visit of trustees to the renovated medical withdrawal unit at the bridge, which we provided some funding for. And on the lower right, trustees doing a site visit for the Madonna van, because that van provides very important transportation for patients who otherwise wouldn't be able to get to doctor's appointments and diagnostic studies and treatment facilities. And this van was converted from gasoline to a compressed gas system using money from our grant that has substantially reduced the cost of operating that van from the Madonna. The lower left picture is a site visit to the Crewe Academy at the Southeast Community College. We funded a project at the Crewe Academy that involves both Lincoln Public Schools and Southeast Community College, training EMTs and pre-nursing students. And on the upper left, the picture of a site visit to-
Is that Judy?
Yeah, yeah, that's Judy. Site visit to the Equine Therapy Center where they use a relationship with horses. I know it sounds surprising, but really use a relationship with horses to help persons suffering from anxiety, depression disorders. You really get a lot out of this. I mean, for one thing, it's a feel-good experience for the trustees to do this, but it does really give us some important information about how the dollars are being spent and are they giving the results that we expected them to get.
One of the projects that we're very proud of is Project All, which is creating a bigger pool of individuals, diverse individuals, to serve in leadership positions in our community. And so these are folks who go through a program at Leadership Lincoln that provides them with board expertise on, information on how to be a good board member, how their interest in diverse topics will improve their board service, and then also links them to organizations to be able to put that additional education into work. And so we're always excited every year to have a new class, and this is the tenth class. About two hundred folks have now gone through this program. The last couple of slides that I'm going to be talking about really relate to how you may see or view the community, health endowment, the community. This first one is construction and equipment. So when you drive around our community, you'll see kind of the fingerprints of CHE in a lot of places. In the last two years, two grant cycles, there's been just about two point one million dollars in funding that has been put toward actual physical or physical locations or equipment. And a lot of funders don't like to fund construction and equipment. We think it's just part of doing good business in the community. Organizations need good facilities, they need good equipment to be able to do the hard work that they do. And so we're proud to support these projects. And lest you think we've forgotten about the city of Lincoln, I wanted to include a couple of grants in the last couple of years, about one point four million dollars worth of projects that have been invested in city agencies for the work they're doing, including a new dental treatment room at the Health Department. We were a funder for the Woods Tennis Center, the TEN Health TV that I'm sure you're very familiar with, as well as a number of other projects. One of the most recent projects is one called the Rocksteady Boxing through Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Sounds kind of interesting, but what we were told was that a boxing program helps significantly with individuals who are facing a Parkinson's disease diagnosis. And the Air Park Facility had boxing equipment, but it needed to be repaired in order for them to be able to use it. So we gave them funds to repair that equipment. And there was, shortly after that, there was a story on this, which if you haven't had a chance to see on TEN City TV, I hope you do, about people who are substantially being helped with their Parkinson's disease symptoms because of this program that the city is operating at Air Park. And just so you have a taste of the kinds of work that these trustees do on our behalf, we do have four applicant workshops, many of them attend, but there are twenty committee meetings, ten board meetings, twenty-four site visits, and two grantee gatherings. So our trustees are very highly engaged in the work that we do. And we also take time to read every quarterly report that is submitted to us, which is about a hundred and sixty every year, and respond to them all. And the trustees also have access to those. So they're very busy. It's definitely a working board.
On the following page is a brief investment update. The portfolio, which is approximately sixty million dollars, is about sixty percent fixed income and forty percent equities. The diversification, which is represented in the pie chart, everything shaded in some shade of blue are fixed income investments. So it's not only diversification within the types of equities, but also diversification within the types of fixed income. The equities are all green, and there's a little one percent slice of the pie at the top, which is cash. Additionally, the portfolio is approximately two-thirds passively managed using index funds that are very, very inexpensive, which helps to increase returns over the long term. On the following page are the annual returns of the fund relative to the S and P 500, which is the stock index, and the bar cap aggregate, which is the bond index. The first forty percent of the time periods, the fund was invested exclusively in fixed income, and so you can see it tracks very closely with the bond index. At, in about 2008 is when the switch over to investing in some equities took place. And very bad year for the S and P 500 for stocks in general, but the fund was only down ten percent at that time. So wonderful there. And since then, it's really been a in-between, a stock and a bond portfolio, which is exactly what we want it to be. Finally, looking at the annualized returns, looking back over the past one, three, five, ten, and since inception numbers relative to those same benchmarks that I discussed earlier, I draw your attention to the since inception numbers of approximately six percent, which is better than both of the indices. Some of that is due to the fixed income and not experiencing the downturn in 2007 and eight, but a lot of it is prudent fiduciary-based investments that we use.
Okay, that concludes our question. If you have any questions, you might have to go to the other.
So if I read this right, your current balance is sixty-one million, is that approximately right? And so how much are you granting each year?
It really depends on what is perceived to be the forecast, and we use our investment managers to help us with that. But traditionally, it's, right now, in the last few years, it's been right around two million. This year it's two million, last year it was two point one million, I think. And so we're looking right around two million every year for the last, I'd say, three to four years. It's steadily increased every year since the fund was created.
Okay. And then just looking at that, you started with thirty-seven, and you, so far, you've granted twenty-six and a half million. So here in the next three or four years or so, you'll, you will have granted as much as you started with, it looks like. That's great.
We love compound interest.
Yes.
Lori, can you tell a little bit about the Peer Services Program? I think at one time, they were looking to assist the Public Defender's Office in trying to work with them on offering that. Is that something in the works, or?
Well, I know the Public Defender's Office has hired, I believe, a social worker. And I was just at the recent, one of the most interesting meetings that I get to go to is when the peers and the police officers come together about once a quarter. We sit and have fame staves, and the officers and the peers are together, and they're kind enough to invite me. And they spend time talking about some difficult cases, they spend time talking about how they can do better in certain areas, all those kinds of things. But one of the things that's recently come up, the last meeting that I was at, was how to engage more the Public Defender's Office in coming into those meetings. So I think there's always a desire to make sure that peers are used whenever possible, and they're very open to that. So I know they, that Joe has been to a meeting, and I think they're inviting him to continue to come, or at least his new staff person, so.
John?
I want to thank you. I've had the privilege of working with you, gosh, all these years. I remember we went through a lot of the initial board appointments. What is the term that you allow a board member to serve?
Three, they're three-year terms. Again, appointed by the mayor, approved by the city council, they're three-year terms, maximum of two terms, so six years maximum, except for the two hospital system presidents and the director of Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. Those three serve in perpetuity. But the others, the other-
They call it a life sentence.
The others are all maximum six years.
Now, as I recall too, Mike Tablin was real helpful on investments. So he was on and then went off a term and then came back. Is that how you got him on longer?
Yeah.
No, it's been very rewarding. And as several said, this is one of the most working boards you'll find. We really thank you.
It is a busy, busy board.
How many meetings do you have in the next, you told me-
We have seven meetings and events over the next twenty-
We have seven meetings and events over the next 20 days. So a lot of things going on.
I also figure out the ones that can't say no, so.
Just get his travel schedule.
Yeah.
You mentioned that roughly 2 million a year is given away in grants, and looking at the total for early childhood in 2016, it was a little more than half of the amount of money you gave away. If you were to characterize the remainder, do you, how would you say that was spent?
Good question. I think there was a number of projects related to children that were over five. When I was putting that together, I really wanted to stick on the early childhood, zero to five. There were a number of projects for the peer services in the high schools, there was a nutrition program, and there were some that weren't specifically related to zero through five, even though certainly they would fall into that mix, the dental treatment room, for example. All of those kinds of things certainly would, there will be some children from that category, but it wasn't specific. These were very specific in both conversation and intent to be very early childhood. So one of the large grants was to the Bridge for their medical detoxification unit. So we look at, it's not limited solely to that. I know the board spends a lot of time thinking about that, but recognizing other needs also exist. And I will also say about the Bridge, one of the things that we've been able to provide at the Bridge is also a physician. And one thing that they had never had the opportunity to do was to have a physician there who could tailor individuals through withdrawal. Everyone kind of had the same standing orders, and you kind of went through that. But having that physician there has not only helped tailor withdrawal, which helps people get through it easier, which may mean they're more amenable than to longer-term treatment, but when they leave there, then they're already established at a medical home at Hill 360 Clinic. So again, even though it's a medical withdrawal unit grant, it's an example of how we try to make sure that we're creating a system that's tied together, and it's not just something that happens and then we go on to the next thing. So I think it's one of our probably strongest viewpoints, is making sure that there's a system approach to how we fund.
Going back to the $1.1 million on early childhood projects, I really urge you to read some of the articles that are included in your packets, because the $1.1 million being half or a lower half of the total amount of money we spent, you might think this is disproportionate. But if you read those articles about the impact, the downstream impact of these events that happen in early childhood, it's profound, and it has some huge consequences for the children as they become adults and for society. And I think it's really worthwhile investment to focus on those projects.
I just have to inject, Laurie has to be given a really deep hand of appreciation. She has been there as the director all these years and tackled this very well, so we really thank you.
It's been my, absolutely, it's been, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with this group and to be entrusted to provide some leadership to the fund. And I also want to recognize quickly Jody Lowe's back here in the green, who has been with me from the beginning, and that itself deserves some kind of recognition. And Marcia White in my office, the three of us, I think are all of the same mindset that we're here to protect and preserve the fund, but also to try to do the best thing on behalf of the city.
You know, that was one of the things, initially, when the hospital was sold, that people just thought that would be a declining balance from that 37 million, and you've done miraculous things to both help the community on an ongoing basis, but then still build up the amount. Hope you can continue.
Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, girl.
So looking at your crystal ball, I'm sure you get more requests than you're able to fill, and just seeing the emerging needs within the community, what, give us a little sample of coming attractions?
Well, I will, I, I'm going to echo what Chuck said. I think one of the most difficult issues that we face as a community is addressing early childhood. And we can look all day at mental health calls and poverty and all of those statistics, but they all originate somewhere. And I think in many cases, they originate in the very young child. And so it is, people say, well, how do you do that? How do you get your hands around that population? They're not in school yet, they're, they're, you know, how do you do that? That is a question of our time, I think. And so I have a board that's absolutely intent on addressing it in some way. There are a lot of people in this community, obviously, that are working on that issue. But I think it's also something that we all need to step up and just assume responsibility for, and that's that zero to five age group, and how to keep them on the path to success, get them ready for school, keep them healthy, teach them to eat right, you know, and also help parents parent really well. So that, I think, is a huge thing. In terms of the policies of healthcare reform, wow, that could have major impacts. It absolutely could. We've been waiting to see how that's been changing, and we had this landscape. I would encourage you to watch that if you haven't on TV, the hospital presidents and Judy talking about that, and really what different policies, what the impact of those are going to be on our community. But that one, the crystal ball's still a little cloudy for me, yeah.
One of the things that's really impressed me in my, in my years on this board are how many individuals and organizations there are in this community who are working, many of them voluntarily or with minimal wages, to do very, very important philanthropic work in the community. It's really, Lincoln is a very supportive community.
And I just want to mention one other thing. My time, my history will tell me of certain things that work. And I think what we have to do is look at the things that work and build on them. And one of those things, and the reason I think we have supported them so consistently is peers. There are people in the community that have such lived experience and who have fought and come out the other side. And I think there's something to be said for using individuals with lived experience in addressing issues like mental illness, addressing things, parenting, being able to utilize those skills. Because it's a type of skill that you can't buy with a degree or with, with money or any of those things. It's a skill that's learned by being there and having gone through the system. And unless you've done that, it's really hard to relate to another person. So as you are looking even through things, I know that you have funded a peer in a couple, to work with the police department, and I commend you for that, because we have seen that work, and we know it works, and it keeps people out of jail, it keeps people off the street. And so as much as, I think that's going to be more and more a skill base that we're going to need to draw upon.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you for the work you do and your service.
All right, why don't we reconvene adjourned and reconvene at two?